School districts in Maine and New Hampshire have been invited by Drummond and Woodson to join the lawsuit. Drummond and Woodson has determined that participation in this.
You text her real quick. She just said she's having trouble getting in, but I.
Claims of being asserted on behalf of public school districts. Our law firm Drummond.
She just said she's having trouble getting in, but I think she may have tried to use the um.
Okay.
A different invite. I don't know. Is she an attendee?
No.
The host has to let her in.
Nope. She's not in under that line.
Can you just text her an invite? Or I can actually.
There she is.
Okay. Soon as you'll and there's Lucia. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. It is Thursday, July 16th. And tonight is a Scarborough School Board meeting. If I could please have the attendance.
Sure. Ms. Dergan?
Yes, I mean here.
Ms. Giftos?
Yeah.
Dr. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Casalonis?
Here.
Ms. Leighton?
Here.
Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner? And Mr. Bennett?
Here.
If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Okay. Right, seeing none. Just trying to see if there's any public comments tonight. I'll give it just a second. Okay, seeing none. Moving into 6.0, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Lian. I'm not sure if you can pull up those screens on the slides. Perfect. Great. Thank you so much. So tonight I'd like to talk about the school district opioid litigation information. And I apologize if I'm gonna read a little bit. I'll try to get through this fairly quickly. I have basically three to four slides. Across the country, there are lawsuits being brought by states and local governments against a number of pharmaceutical companies as a result of the public health cost arising from opioid crisis. Similar claims of being asserted on behalf of public school districts. Our law firm Drummond and Woodson out of Portland, Maine, has been contacted by the national law firm leading this litigation. School districts in Maine and New Hampshire have been invited by Drummond and Woodson to join the lawsuit. Drummond and Woodson has determined that participation in this litigation may be a good opportunity for districts to join in this lawsuit for the following reasons. Participation in the litigation will be at no cost for the plaintiff's school districts, again, at no cost to the districts. The national law firm will be fronting all the costs and legal fees will come out of the money recovered, if any money at all. Minimal time will be required to complete simple forms and speaking with counsel at some point in the process. Although the ultimate amount of any recovery is unknown, we anticipate that participating school districts will receive a financial payment, most likely over a period of years to add to their special education budget. It has been communicated to us by Drummond and Woodson that no cost, no risk, low potential of our time. This is more than making a statement. This is a timely request. In order to be part of a lawsuit, we will need to vote on this tonight. And so have just a couple more things to say, just to kind of break this down a little bit more with understanding. A major focus of these claims is the increased expense of special ed and supplementary supplementary education costs caused by the growing number of children born with disabilities as a result of maternal opioid used during pregnancy. Experts have estimated that public schools nationwide have incurred and will incur an increased cost in excess of $22 billion for providing these necessary supports and services to children with prenatal opioid exposure. As you know, this is a highly addictive drug, and it has raised concerns across the country with our children. Exposure to this is linked with developmental delays with children and intellectual disabilities. In 2016, the United States reached seven cases per thousand births, which was more than double the rate only eight years earlier of 2.2 cases per thousand births. And so the number of undiagnosed cases likely drives the rate even much higher. School districts should be confiscated for any expenditures that they've incurred, and more importantly, for those that will incur for many years to come. Basically, in summary, as in all the negotiations, there's a strength in numbers. And a growing number of school districts, not only in Maine and New Hampshire, but across the country are going to form this pact. Keep in mind for our community members, the school district clients will spend nothing out of their pocket for this lawsuit. Again, I just want to emphasize this would not be a cost to us as a district. And my recommendation is for the board to consider this. And then we can move forward with signing the paperwork with Drummond and Woodson tomorrow.
Great. Before we open up discussion, is there a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to make. Sorry, I don't have it on my screen.
It's okay. I do if you want me to.
A motion to approve the resolution that the Scarborough School System will join other school systems and file claims as part of multi-district litigation and bankruptcy litigation, and to join the class action lawsuit settlement class in an effort to recoup damages caused by the opioid epidemic.
Second. And discussion? Just to open this up, Sandy, thank you for bringing this forward. In reading through the resolution and the information that Drummond had provided, I think there is strength in numbers. This has hit Maine very hard. I think it's important that we're making a stand and that we are standing behind the fact that this is a crisis that needs to be addressed within our country and within our state.
Um. Can I speak?
Of course.
Um, so I support the motion. This is the population that I work with and see the unfortunate devastating consequences that caused by prenatal exposure to opiate use during pregnancy. You know, the litigation is limited to prenatal exposure. What it doesn't take into account is the delays caused by the neglect of parental use of opiates. And I think that that also causes a lot of additional behavioral, emotional, and developmental needs in our student population. Of course, that can is probably much more difficult to prove as it relates to the pharmaceutical companies, because at that point there's a lot more parental causation, but certainly the cost to school districts is much more expansive than than just the prenatal exposure. I appreciate Drummond Woodson reaching out to us and giving us this opportunity after they've been contacted. I, you know, they are such experts in their field that we're lucky. But it's times like this where I wish that we could have the best of both worlds, their expertise, but also a little bit more of a law firm that was devoted specifically to Scarborough, because I wonder what the options would be if we were to pursue this just as Scarborough, not as a member of a class action suit. But I don't know that that's an option. And, you know, this is an option, and it's something that they're recommending to us. So for that reason, I support it. But there are times where, again, where I do wish that we that our legal advice was a little bit more tailored to our town specifically.
Nick?
Um, yeah, I agree with basically everything that's been said so far. I spent a little time today actually digging around and doing some research just how widespread these type of lawsuits are around the country, because when I first read this, my first thought was, you know, yes, the pharmaceutical companies hold a huge stake in this. They're the ones that are developing these drugs, but there's a lot of I was trying to get my head around exactly what is the target or what is the targeting of the pharmaceutical specific companies specifically? And what I came down to is kind of like a two-pronged thing, just to share with everyone on this call, as well as everyone in the public. It sounds like these lawsuits essentially allege that manufacturers misled consumers by failing to inform them about the dangers of opioids and overstating the drug's benefits. And then, two, distributors failed to control opioid supplies and allowed them to be over prescribed in violation with state laws. But when I read that, it helped me refocus a little bit and understand exactly what these type of lawsuits are going after the pharmaceutical companies for. Because like I said, there are a whole host of others involved in creating the crisis that we have now. So I wanted to share that because I did the research earlier just to get my own head around specifically what these lawsuits are working.
Thank you for that. Sarah?
Um, I support this. I just have two questions, and we may not have the answers to them right now, but it would just be interesting to know. And the first one is, have we actually been able to quantify what the cost has been to our district that would, you know, fall under this claim?
Now, again, they don't know what that information would be at this point in time. The recovery is unknown. You know, you might not get anything, but I think they're optimistic if this goes through and they win.
Just to clarify, I was not thinking about what we would get, but what the cost, basically what we're trying to get back of what has our cost been in terms of special education because of the opioid addiction? Is that something that we've quantified?
I don't have that offhand.
Hold on, I'm bringing somebody who does. Oh, I can't. Kelly or Diane, if you could bring Allison over? Thank you.
And just while we're waiting for Allison, Sandy, what other districts in Maine have signed on to this, do you know?
Well, this just came our way yesterday, so it went to every district in the state of Maine. And my assumption is probably most people are behind it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, so Sandy was saying Diane's and Sandy and I participated in a webinar with Drummond Woodson the other day, which also included New Hampshire. We have never costed out, nor in special education, is there a coded disability of due to this, it comes other under other medical. I can tell you that I'm specifically aware of cases that we've either known at birth due to adoption or foster care, or over time, as they said, developmentally, they haven't been meeting their developmental needs and the stages. And then when we go into history, that becomes a possible indicator. But as Sandy was saying, they're not going to be asking any individual districts for statistics relative to what we've done in the past. As a class action suit, this will just be settled based on our percentage of identified students within our state, and that's how it'll be divvied out.
Okay. Thanks, Allison.
Sure.
Thank you. Hillary?
I was just wondering if anyone knew is the lawsuit targeted towards states like Maine that have have identified opioid addiction and use as more of a problem than other locations?
The lawsuit originated out of Chicago initially with pharmaceutical with that. I think you saw the information from Drummond Woodson. I believe there's about 10 other states now that have joined, and that's why they've reached out to other states, specifically Drummond Woodson. They shared with us, they embedded the law firms that are representing the cases. They did some of the research that Nick was talking about and have passed on this to us. But I would say it's a June, July 30th filing date, and so they are expecting that a significant more number of states will come on board.
Thank you. Allison, I just want your quick opinion. I mean, I know we've talked about this before, but just to get it out there, you know, every year we see a substantial increase in our special education needs and therefore our funding. And is that something that can be attributed to the increase in opioid addiction, in your opinion, or maybe even scientifically?
That's a great question. I'm not sure, other than I can we can certainly document the increased level of emotional disabilities and significant behavior regulation in our incoming five-year-olds. The even, you know, numbers don't add up equally one-to-one, and we have had our needs have just been so severe with our incoming little ones. And so we've been able to track that over time. I think, you know, I've shared in the past a historical perspective of the number of incoming students and the number that require one-on-one adult support throughout the day. We certainly have many more complex medical students than we've ever had before.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I think we're ready to vote on the motion.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Moving to 7.0, it's an update on the school transition reopen design task force.
Great. So we wanted to give you a little bit of an update. I know that at our next board meeting on July 30th, we're going to have a workshop dedicated to this. But we're also aware that many people are wondering about the progress that the district is making. And so we wanted to give you a brief update tonight. So for those who are not aware, we have developed a task force. And the role of the task force really is to review the most current directives and recommendations from the Maine Department of Education and from the Centers for Disease Control. We know that that's something that's a moving target, and information is coming out on a regular basis. We have been considering input from some of our public health officials, including our district physician and other community members who are experts in their fields, as well as public safety, and all with the intention to develop a plan that we can present to you on July 30th that includes information about our physical reentry needs and protocols that would be developed, health and wellness needs and protocols, academic planning, and also social emotional planning. So to date, our work has included, our task force has met four times in June, and that's made up of over 90 individuals from a whole variety of stakeholder groups in Scarborough. And we have subdivided those folks into four different committees. One on health, one focusing on operations, another focusing on academics, and a fourth on social emotional wellness. The task of each committee is to really configure three plans for learning per the directive of the state. What would continued remote learning look like? What would a hybrid model wherein we would have some distance learning and some in-person learning? And then if we were 100% back in school, what would that look like? And again, all of our planning is in line with DOE and state guidelines. This is our stoplight in terms of the plans that we've been making. So if and this is true for all districts in the state of Maine. And so I know that there has been a lot on the news and in the media about planning at this time. And so many of you have probably already heard some inklings about what are the plans if we're in the red, if we're in the yellow, if we're in the green? You know, so just, you know, passing along, you know, this messaging that we're using internally as well. We have gathered some significant feedback to date. Prior to the start of our task force meeting, as we were closing out the end of the school year, there were surveys that were distributed to families, to students, and to staff. And then on July 1st, we sent out a couple of other surveys, because after the start teams did meet, there were some pieces of information that they felt we had not gathered yet that would be helpful for our planning. And we also were reaching out to staff to get information about, you know, what their needs might be for the fall as well. So what I wanted to do this evening was to just give you a brief synopsis of some of the information from the June survey and also from the July 1 survey, because I think at the heart of all of this, in addition to doing, following the recommendations from the DOE and the CDC is, you know, a laser-focused attention on what is the feedback that we get from our community. So I'll start with the Panorama survey. Panorama Education is a web-based service that we partnered with to give the surveys in June. And so this slide talks about the community survey. And so there were over 1,300 responses. And, you know, we'll just hit a few of the highlights here. There were, in terms of childcare, when that was asked, 24% of our families were somewhat too extremely concerned about childcare in the remote learning that we had or in thinking about what learning could look like moving ahead. There was also a lot of feedback about the amount of adult support that was required to help students during remote learning. 63% of our families said that adult support was required almost all of the time to sometimes. And then you'll see 36% said that support was really only required once in a while or to a minimal degree. And 21% of our families said that they wanted, I'm sorry, this doesn't go with this, but 21% of our families said that they wanted schools to continue to operate remotely until a vaccine was available. If we look at some other pieces from the survey, and again, this was in June, and so I'm going to show you some things from July. And again, I think every time that you dipstick and you ask people for information, you'll see that things aren't always as static as we might imagine them to be. So in June, 63% of our families felt like they would be comfortable with school being held onsite in our building. 56% were in agreement about a blend of onsite and remote. 30% wanted to really make sure that there was parent choice in a model. And 15% felt pretty solidly about the continuation of remote learning. And we also asked, how would folks feel most comfortable about their children returning to school? And you can see there that, you know, the big pieces that folks felt strongly about were in terms of attending to social distancing requirements, taking a look at class sizes. And 50% felt that staff should be wearing masks. 43% felt that students should be wearing masks. And then you can see 21% felt like should continue in a remote mode until either more testing or a vaccine becomes available. So on July 1st, as I said, we sent out our own survey through Google because we were asking a more limited number of questions, and we were looking to get some specific things answered. So the first question that was posed to parents was about if school had to open in a hybrid model. And over 75% of our parents were in favor of sending their students to school if we had a hybrid model. 10% felt that they wanted to continue in that remote, in a remote learning model. And 14% were undecided. We also asked if we were able to safely have a full reopening with all students. Again, just about the same number, 75% were in favor of sending their students full-time. Almost 7% felt strongly about staying in a remote experience. And almost 18% were undecided. And in the second survey, we had almost 1,200 families who answered, so pretty consistent numbers of folks that have been providing us with some feedback. In terms of, we also wanted to ask a question in terms of transportation, because again, as we're doing some of this planning, not all of the rules and regulations have been shared. And so we wanted to find out what was the potential or the needs that our families had in regards to transportation. Because like many other districts in the state of Maine, if we were in a position where we could only have a limited Maine, if we were in a position where we could only have a limited number of students on our buses, traveling our students to school could become one of our biggest roadblocks. And so in asking the question about where they sat with transportation needs, 77% of our families said that they could provide for their own transportation if that needed to happen. Almost 9% said that they require transportation and that their students would not be able to come to school if the school could not provide that. And then almost 14% were not sure at this time. The other question that we wanted to ask about was childcare, because again, we're very sensitive to the fact that, you know, that when students were in that remote learning model, that that created a lot of hardships for our parents. And so we wanted to get a sense of where they were at with childcare moving forward, not knowing which of those three scenarios we might be in at any time during the year. And so is there a potential for us to do some thinking and planning in that direction? 52% of our families who responded said they did not require childcare. Another 14% felt that if their student schedules could match across schools, say we were in a hybrid model across phases, as long as their students were on a similar schedule, they would not require childcare. But 35% of our families did indicate that they would need to find some kind of childcare if either a hybrid or distance learning model were used in the fall. And then we asked an open-ended question, and that was a lot of fun to pull all the themes from. And so I relied on some of the work that I had done previously in my dissertation to do some codifying and to figure out what some of those major themes are. And I've listed them here. Not surprisingly, and again, really matching up with some of the things that we saw in our June survey, the two big themes that came across consistently were that the parents in the survey, the narrative comments spoke to the desire to want schools to reopen in some fashion, whether that be hybrid or in-person learning. And then right behind that, 105 comments that spoke to the need for more robust learning, if we were in a distance model, and to really take a look at live instruction, synchronous learning versus just posting learning plans and teachers, you know, checking in, in the way that happened in the spring. You know, obviously, we did not have a lot of turnaround time when this pandemic started, but we've been really carefully reflecting and adjusting our course as we consider the scenarios for the fall. Those were the two huge themes. You can see 109 comments for one, 105 for the second. And from that, the other themes really dropped. 39 comments about social and emotional well-being, comments around special services. All of these are still very important. And so because they came up in the double digits, I wanted to make sure that we shared them with you this evening. And so, you know, it was like the ability to meet requirements for safety, for, you know, kid opinions about students needing to wear masks, about social distancing, that came up. Transportation or drop-off and pickup questions were listed. There was some feedback about using a more traditional grading system this time around, and making sure that there was some explicit teacher feedback that was voiced. Childcare, again, although that was a question that came up in the narrative comments. We did have 23 people write narrative comments about their desire to continue in distance learning. Some folks who thought that either we should explore some other models and options, or that they might independently be exploring other options for their students. We had some feedback in regards to how hybrid days would be selected, and what are some other hybrid models that we might consider. And then folks who really wanted to make sure that there were still activities or athletics available for their students. And so our next steps. So early next week, although it may be tomorrow, because we just got some news, head off the press before the meeting this evening, the state is expected to be providing us with more guidance and requirements that would need to be met. So specifically, what they've talked about is releasing a metric that they're going to apply to say, based on this metric, the guidance is that your, your community is in the green, in the yellow, or in the red. It's going to be the decision of every local district to ultimately decide what to do about school opening. The state has been clear with us now that they're going to provide us with guidance, but those decisions will be local decisions. And so they're going to provide us with that metric, and it's going to be a metric on a weekly basis. So for example, and if you've been following any of the metrics, I looked at the metric a couple of days ago, just to kind of get a sense for myself. Right now, in Cumberland County, the rate of people testing positive is, it was 3.7 per 100,000 residents the other day. That places us in the yellow. Yellow is anywhere from one case to 10 cases per 100,000. So to be in the green, you have to be under one case per 100,000. And if we grew to over 10 cases per 100,000, then we would be considered in the red. And then the other piece that we're expecting from the state is also some requirements about what criteria we would need to be able to meet from a safety standpoint to be able to open. So whether that be, again, we haven't seen it, so we don't know, but whether that be about social distancing requirements, or masks, et cetera, et cetera, we are going to be able to, we're going, we would need to be able to demonstrate that we can meet those criteria. The DOE is also hosting some technical assistance meetings on July 21st and 22nd, so on Tuesday and Wednesday, to help districts in terms of moving forward with their models. And our task force meetings are also happening next week. And so, you know, we were really hopeful when we set the timing for our next task force meetings, that we would have some updated information from the state. And it would seem that maybe the stars are going to align for us, because we're really hopeful that we're going to have that information so that next Wednesday and Thursday, our teams can, you know, have a more realistic look at where we think we may be, and really hammering out those, those other details that we still need to work on. So that by July 30th, we can come back to you with some really concrete information. And I apologize for my small dog barking, because I still hear her. So I imagine you can as well.
Oh, what happens. Diane, thank you very much.
She wants you, Diane. She wants to be with you.
Oh, she absolutely does.
I do have a quick question, Diane. Based on the metrics, and you had said, you know, right now it looks as though we're in the yellow. What, how frequently are we going to be following where we are in the colors? Is it something that every Monday, we're going to decide, are we red, yellow, and green? Or is it going to be based on a longer period of time? How, how is that going to be determined?
My understanding, and Sandy, you know, feel free to jump in as well, because we've been attending a lot of the same meetings and hearing similar information. But my understanding is that that information would be communicated out to us on a regular basis. But the decision whether or not we need to change lanes from what we're doing is still going to be a local decision.
Okay.
That's correct.
Hillary?
Diane, you had said that they were going to be issuing guidance for red, yellow, and green by town. Did you, like, town to town, like Scarborough could be yellow, and literally Gorham could be green? Or is it county?
So some information that we've gotten has said that it's going to be by county. Other information that we received did say by town. So, you know, again, there's, there's a little bit of mystery to much of this. And so we're, you know, we're hanging in and playing well and saying, okay, what's the information that we have today? How do we use that? And then understanding that we're always in this draft form, and that updates are going to need to be made on a regular basis.
Wow. Good information. Any other comments?
Thank you for all of the work you've been doing. I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I think we understand the anxiety and the angst that everyone has about, you know, the consideration of school starting. And I think, you know, we would like to have solidified plans just as much as everyone else would. So we're really hopeful that, that the information that we'll receive in, you know, in the next week or two are really going to help to set us on a, on a solid path. And again, allow us to continue to update the community about where we are.
April?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that for any of our community members who are curious about any of the documents that the start time, that the start committee generated, or if they want to look through the meeting notes, all of that stuff is publicly available. If you go to our website and click on the Scarborough Schools Distance Learning box, which is where we all got our lesson plans for the spring, that takes you to a separate page. And at the very top of that page, there's a link to all of the start documents. And so if there are community members who would like to look, those are there.
Thank you for reminding everyone of that, April.
All right. Moving on. Next up is the Chair's Report. And real short, real sweet. I don't think this one's me, but I'm going to say it. Thank you. Tuesday was a great day with the passing of the budget. I think it relieves a lot of pressure from all of us. And I really wanted to take an opportunity to thank our administration. You changed that budget so many times. Thank you for being positive as we got through all of this. Thanks for your flexibility. The Finance Committee, holy cow, that's three years in a row. Two with the exact team. Amazing work. You guys are absolute rock stars with what you've done. And thank you to everybody in the community who put out signs, who rallied support. It was the largest turnout that we've ever had on a budget vote. It was incredible. I hope we can keep this kind of energy and support going for the schools year over year. So thank you, everyone. Moving into committee reports. Not sure who's first up.
I'd put myself first.
Okay. I don't have access to the screen. So Kelly, if you don't mind hitting the slide, please. Excellent.
So perfectly to piggyback on what Leanne just said, you know, as a communications committee, we were on a very shortened timeline for this budget cycle. There was not very much time between Town Council's second reading and the vote this year. And I just want to express my appreciation to Kristin and Hillary and to Sarah for also coming to our communications committee meeting and making sure that we had our talking points down and our facts and figures correct. Thank you to Kate for helping us to pull together some tables and some things that we had thought would be helpful for the community to make their decision. This slide is just a sampling of some of the memes and social media that we put forward. We also made good use of, and you can go to the next slide, Kelly. Thank you. We also made good use of our town web, our school website, and so the Swift Reach email. I want to thank Chief Thurlow once again for allowing us to use his space in the note section in the leader that is free of charge for us. And so that is an amazing resource for us to be able to get some print media out that does not cost, that does not come at a cost. And thank you to Kristin for writing the body of that document. Then a couple of other things, just to make a point, given the financial constraints that we were all feeling and the amount of work that went into this budget, we as a committee decided not to place an ad in the leader this year. And we did not do a robocall. And the reason I put those two things on the slide was I have seen some questions out in the community as to whether or not we did those things. And so first and foremost, I just wanted to answer those questions. And then I also wanted to be able to say publicly that when the school board uses Swift Reach to make an announcement like for an election day, that does not come at an additional cost either. That is part of our subscription. And technically, you know, we subscribe to Swift Reach, and there is a cost associated with that. But it's not quite the same as when a political action committee or private citizens organize a robocall. And so it may be a difference without distinction for some folks. But I did want to, you know, make sure that that information was available. Next plan is to meet and debrief. We'll go through our budget calendar and make sure that we write down what worked and what didn't. And so if anybody has any comments that they would like to pass along to the committee, we would love to make sure that we incorporate the board's thoughts. And thank you to everybody who helped me last minute and, you know, eyes on documents. And thank you to Kelly for helping me with distribution. And thank you to those cute little buggers who stood out on Route 1 multiple times during the day on Tuesday, helping to get out the vote.
Awesome. Thank you. Nick?
It's me. So it's been a while since we had a long-range facilities planning update. So I reached out earlier this week to our district leaders and just asked, because I've been, I drive by Pleasant Hill School every day. And so I had noticed that the portables were there. And I thought this was a really good opportunity to just give an update on the two projects that are going on. So right now, we do have placement of portables going on this summer at two out of our three primary schools, Eight Corners and Pleasant Hill. I got this update just this week, a couple of days ago, from Todd. At Eight Corners, the two classrooms or one unit, there are two classrooms in a unit. And please, somebody, correct me if I'm getting this wrong. The portables are physically in place. They're connected to utilities, electricity, water sprinklers. There's a little remaining fit-up and finishing that still has to occur, and that's going to occur over the next few weeks. Pleasant Hill literally looks exactly the way it's pictured there. I did some looking online for like stock pictures of portable classrooms, and I realized I could like get on my bike and ride around the corner and take photos. So I did today. So this is literally from today. The top photo there is the, is the foundation that they're waiting for to cure so they can place the units. In the parking lot, it looks like there are two units, but actually, that's just one. They come in two halves. And the two walls that are facing each other in the bottom photo, actually, that paper just comes off and they just, they go together. They just kind of match together and make one unit that'll fit on that foundation of above. So they're going to be placed with a crane as soon as the foundation is cured. That's why they're currently sitting in the parking lot. So I just wanted to give that update. I know that's not, we don't think of portable classrooms as anything long range, but we also know that there's time and consideration and funding for our new primary school, which is down the road a little bit, hopefully not too far. But I have a feeling like these classrooms will be used for the next several years. But I have a feeling like these classrooms will be used for the next several years. And so they're a good investment for our children who need a place to sit.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, as part of the negotiations update, I thought we could do, we could do an overview of, sorry, I'm just, can you guys hear me? Okay. My AirPods are dinging at me. I would do an overview of the recently ratified and signed professional staff contract. The negotiations have been ongoing, so I just thought it might be helpful. I know you guys have a lot of this information. And obviously, the contract is available online as a public document. But I thought I might highlight some of the, the biggest changes. So, oh, I don't have control of this. So Kelly, can you go to the, thank you. So just to review negotiations between the school board and the SEA negotiating team started in February of 2019. And we worked really hard for a lot, many, many hours from then until about August 2019, at which point we made the decision to try a mediator. So the request for mediation was filed in August and we got a date in October. And I think that was, I think it was two meetings with the mediator. And when we weren't able to reach an agreement in mediation, the next step was to file for a fact finding hearing with the Maine Labor Relations Board. So we filed for that in October and we got a date for that hearing in December. And then once they made their, their recommendations, we were able to reach a tentative agreement in February of 2020. A lot of the unsettled language that we went into fact finding with remains the same as current contract language. But I did think, and so I thought that I would highlight some of the additions and changes outside of that language. So if you can go to the next slide, thanks. So one of the things that the teachers have expressed at the very beginning of our negotiations was that they felt like they have so many more responsibilities than they did even five years ago that the amount of meeting times was really infringing on their practice. So we ended up reducing the amount of contracted meeting times by 25%. And we defined teacher meetings to be time without administratively scheduled activities. So if you look at the chart here, you can see that in the expired contract, there were 20 meetings that were administratively scheduled for one and a half hours each and 10 teacher meetings that were scheduled for one hour each. So that's per year. And that was a total of 40 hours per year that they were contracted to, to be in meetings. And the new contract, we were able to divide it up a little bit more and then reduce the number of hours. So we divided it, we halved the number of faculty meetings. So it's 10 administratively faculty, administratively scheduled faculty meetings, which would, will only last for one hour. And then there are 10 administratively scheduled department meetings, which is like a smaller group that they can work together to design with their administration. And those are one hour in length. And then there's 10 teacher design meetings that are one hour in length for a total of 30 hours per year. Yes, Alicia?
Those meetings are the, does professional development occur in those meetings? Or is that, does that occur separately?
It can. And so it can actually occur at any of those meetings. Administrators can schedule time for professional development. And they can also schedule time, if they have time, to do some of the, some of the online, not online, but some of the, it's not paperwork because it's not on paper, but some of the paperwork that's required for, Diane, what am I trying to say? That, so teachers have to do some note.
Teacher evaluation and their growth planning?
Yeah, but what is it called? Like they have to log it, I guess. They have to log information from their, for self evaluations and for lesson plans and things like that into Eye Observation, which is a, is a program that they use. So sometimes that can be scheduled for that time. We also did change the, the, instead of saying workshops, we start, we use, we're now using the terminology professional development so that it can be a little bit more flexible for what that might mean. Thanks. So can you, thanks. So the other topic that had a lot of changes to it was the section on leave, including sick leave and personal time. So, so sick leave was changed to be 18 days per year of sick leave for all staff. So basically what that did was it, the reason I wrote plus three or minus two days there is because in the old contract, there was some division about when you were hired. So I think if it was, if you were hired before, I think it was 2010, you got 20 days of sick leave. But if you were hired after that date, you got 15 days of sick leave. And so instead of keeping that inequity in the contract, we were able to agree that everybody would now get 18 days of sick time. So for most people, or for many people, that's an addition of three days. But for some people, that was two days less than they were getting. However, we also added on the second bullet point, you can see bereavement leave used to be taken from sick leave, but we added three days of just bereavement leave that is not taken from sick time, that can be used to attend funeral or if you had to do any estate matters or anything like that. So in the end, the, even people who used to have 20 sick days have a increase in one, of one day in terms of their leave, if you, if you put those two together. The other thing was we added a section on parental leave. It's, don't, don't misunderstand that this, this didn't mean that we did not allow for maternity leave prior to this, but it wasn't specifically stated in the contract. And we wanted to make sure that it also included paternity leave and the same amount of leave for adoption as it would be for somebody who was giving birth or. So that wording changes in there. And then in terms of personal days, those haven't changed. But the teachers were, had asked that we remove the reason required. And so we agreed to that. Three personal days is three personal days. And so as of now, there, you can request a personal day. You don't have to say why you want it unless you're going over your three personal days. And that is remained at the discretion of the superintendent as to whether those additional days would be granted as unpaid days. Does anyone have any questions on that slide? Okay, so one of the other big topics was some changes to the stipend. And so I use the term RIF, which is a reduction in force that's in the event of a layoff. So there was a stipend committee that had been formed prior to the negotiations. They had done some preliminary work on the stipend rubric. We ended up changing that a little bit and coming to an agreement on an entirely new stipend rubric. It, you can go and look at it for yourselves. It takes into consideration a lot of different factors, including how many students are you supervising? Oh, and sorry, these are stipends for extracurriculars, co-curriculars and, and sporting, sporting teams and things like that. There were a few people who, as a result of the new rubric, would have a lower stipend than they would have in the previous contract. And those people were grandfathered in. And we also raised the lead teacher stipend, which hadn't been raised in a, in a while. And we added a 3% increase per year so that it would be commensurate with the salary increases. And then, so there's an entirely new reduction in force scoring system. This again was a change from what was in the current contract. So you are, it's now a point system. And those points are broken up by seniority academic credentials, your certifications and any endorsements you might have, and a small percentage of your teacher effectiveness rating. And then in addition, in that section, there's some new language that now guarantees that any recalled teachers, that means teachers who have been laid off and then asked to come back to their position, will retain the same wages, benefits, and seniority as they had before they were laid off. So the next slide, I think. So then, obviously, you know, a big part of the negotiations is always about salary and any increases. We use a cohort group, which is just a group of districts that have either similar sizes, similar locations, or similar resource profiles. In this case, the cohort group was recommended by the fact finding panel. And so the, the agreement that we were able to reach on salaries was based directly on what the majority fact finding report had, had recommended. It's, it's a year one increase of, I wrote approximately, it's like between 2.5 and 3%. And the reason that that isn't as straightforward is because we had found, so, so teacher, teachers pay scales are based on lanes as far as what your degree is and how many credits you have. And then it's also based on the steps, which equates to how many years' experience you have. So, hold on, I'm just gonna close the door. Lila, can you stop singing, please? I should have noted. So what we found was when we, when we looked at some of the comparison districts, that there was, there were some steps that were farther off than other steps. So we took a percentage of the total increase and put it into those specific steps so that they could be increased to the point where they matched up with, with all the, all of the other steps in the, in the rubric. So, but then in year two and year three, there's straightforward cola raises of 3.5% and 4%. And instead of showing you the giant matrix of numbers, I thought I would put together just three examples of different teachers and what the, the contract would do for them. So this is teacher A. She has her bachelor's degree and is in her first year of teaching. So that equates to the BA lane, which is the bachelor's lane, and she would be on step one. So this year in 2019, 2019 and 20, her salary is $40,063. And the cohort average salary is $41,427. So as you can see, it's not the same. And yet, when you cost it out per diem, it actually is right at the average. That is because different districts have different amounts of contracted days. So a lot of times, it's easier to look at the per diem cost or the per diem salary. Because if one district has 185 days contracted and another district only has 181 days contracted, then your annual salary isn't gonna be as specific of a comparison. So I just, I did put the annual salaries, but in parentheses, I did the per diem. Now, if this same teacher is hired next year, so she's still BA and she's on step one, her salary increases to $41,466, which again, if you look at the per diem rate, is, is the average, equates to the average. So she's just starting out. And then I have teacher B, who is kind of mid-career or early mid-career, I guess. He has been teaching for nine years and has since earned his master's degree. So now he's moved over a lane from his, the BA lane over to the MA lane for masters. And he's now on step 10 because he's been working for nine years. So this year, his salary is $327 per diem. And the cohort average is still a little bit higher than that. So we're not as close on the, this mid-range, this mid-level as we are on the earlier level. And then next year, if the same teacher with his same nine years and master's degree, he would be making $338 per diem, which again, is now a little bit higher than the average. So not again. So now is a little bit higher. So they have, he has made some gains on the cohort between years one and two. Oh, and just so you know, the, the contract actually does go another year, but so few of our cohort groups have a contract that go another year that it doesn't make sense to do a comparison there. But obviously, this, this 2021 year, that they will be getting a 4% raise from there for year three. Once some of the other districts that we have in our comparison group have renegotiated and have contracts that go through that third year, we can do another comparison there. But for now, there's only two. And so it's not really a fair comparison. Okay, so this is teacher C. She now has earned her master's degree plus 15 credits of further professional development work. And she has been teaching for 19 years. So this year, she's making $407 per diem, which is above average by $765 per day. And next year, the same teacher who is in, so again, she's changed lanes now to MA plus 15 and has, is on step 20 of the scale, will be making $422 per diem, which is again, above that, the cohort average by $11. So we're glad that, to see that our teachers have made gains. If you just take a snapshot of these three, these three steps. And like I said, we can do a further comparison of year three of our contract once some of our cohort districts have that year. And that's about it. Does anyone have any questions regarding the contract?
Thank you, Hillary. That was great.
So, and then separately, or I guess tangentially related, I just wanted to also do an update on some of the concessions. I think last time we had, we had announced that we were meeting, we were asking to meet with our collective bargaining units regarding concessions that might help us this school year with all the unknown costs of preparing for learning with COVID-19. And we have met and just had productive conversations and come to, I, I won't even call it a tentative agreement because it's not a document in some cases, but we have come to conclusions with the teachers, the educational support professionals, which is also known as the ESP contract, the administrators, and our superintendent. So the, the teachers, they have, any agreement that, that we might have between the negotiations teams will have to be ratified by their membership. Although, so that's why that has an asterisk next to it. So more information should be forthcoming regarding that. And then the educational support professionals, because their contract year was ending, their concessions are actually embedded within a new contract. And so because that's an actual new contract, it needs to be ratified by both parties. So that again, is like a slightly longer process. The administrators have agreed to a concession. And, and our superintendent, as was we announced last time, has also agreed to, to, to a concession. So that's it for now. That was the one one, sorry.
No, it was great. It was a lot of information.
No, it was great. It was a lot of information. Also wanted to share that our non-bargaining units have also met. So members of the central office staff have met and made concessions as well, in addition to this work that you guys have done on negotiations.
I'll start by saying how much I appreciate everyone's willingness to have these difficult conversations. I'm not even sure who my question is directed at, but now that the budget has passed, what are we able to do with these funds? Because I know that we are only allowed, you know, to spend certain amounts within our budget categories and things like that. And so how, how does this impact, you know, what we are, what we are able to do?
That's a Diane or Sandy question, I would say.
That might be a Kate question too. Kate, if it's all right, I'd like to bring you over. And you should be.
Kate's not here. We can certainly look into that and make sure we get the right answer for you.
She's here. She just needs to unmute.
I wouldn't miss this for the world. What are you talking about? And, and I'm really, I was really listening with, with almost both of my ears as I'm working on budget documents. Isn't that interesting?
Kate, do you have a cot set up in your office?
Yes, yes, I live here now. I'm building a deck out on the windows here, so. So the, the short answer to April's question, I think, is that these concessions will allow us to appropriately allocate the last reductions that we made to accommodate the, the reductions that the town council made to our budget in the last go-round before we went out to referendum. And, and that's really where that money is going. It's allowing us to make line item reductions in salaries pretty much across the board. It doesn't generate enough money to do more than that, really, at my calculation, based on the conversations that are going on right now. I'm, I'm not sure if that's answering the question, but it, it's not as though we now have a new big pool of money that we can reallocate something else.
Yeah, I think, oh, can I, can I just clarify quickly? I think more my question, Kate, is, is do we need to meet as a finance committee? Or i- is that something that the finance committee discusses? Or at this point, is it something that, you know, there's, there are only certain voter categories? And because that came out of staff salaries, it, you know, it needs to be applied to certain areas? Like I know when we do line item transfers and things like that, you know, the, the full board has to approve it. But is this something that the school board finance committee would decide how to prioritize this money? Or is this something that would happen at the staff level?
So it's a little bit of both, because what the board voted to do at their last meeting, when they allocated the final reductions, was to place them in the voter categories broadly, but not to place them into individual line items. Because at that time, and, and still, these conversations are a little bit up in the air and we don't have specifics, although we now have an idea of how things are, are supposed to go. So in terms of process, we do need to create a new line item budget that says not just the broad categories that the voters voted on, but hey, guys, here's what our real budget is. Those reductions, again, will presumably come from the salary lines all across the board for all the different categories of folks who are looking at making these concessions, but will also fit into the reductions that the board made at their last meeting before referendum. So to process, what I would suggest is that the finance committee will be asked to take a look at that line item budget once we've prepared it based on the negotiations that are going on. And then to bring that forward to the, to the board. There doesn't need to be an additional vote because the budget has been passed at referendum based on the categories. But there does need to be a look at it and a presentation, I think, in a public meeting that says, now we have an official line item budget. Here it is. It's posted. And here's what it means. So that's how I would see it.
Great. Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, because I know we've been talking about this a lot and trying to work through this. It, it seems as though one of the questions I heard earlier kind of inferred that this might be some new funds that we have that are not allocated yet. And I just wanted to make sure that we're being clear that when we had that last finance meeting, we took a, we took a chunk of money out of salaries because at that time, discussions were being made about concessions. And so we've kind of already planned for those funds. Is that correct, Kate?
Yeah, and the, the order of magnitude of that final reduction made by the town council was $242,000. And about $200,000 of that was made in these sort of broad gesture reductions, which we hoped to be able to cover with some of these salary agreements that are being reconsidered and renewed now. So Diane's correct. I mean, basically, we said, we'll find $200,000. We're going to plunk them into these categories, which are the largest categories in terms of the number of personnel in them. And we'll identify the individual line items later. Does that help?
Can we just be, just say what I think we're all thinking? If, if these don't go through for whatever reason, or in, in the event that they aren't ratified, or there will have to be cuts to make up for that. Is that correct? To make up for that $200,000 that the town council basically arbitrarily took out of our budget?
Yeah, I, I think that depending on, on the level of the different agreements from the different groups, we would definitely be looking for additional reductions if any of these conversations, particularly with the two biggest bargaining units, fell through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I don't know if there's any other slides for committees or for good, or if Sarah, there's anything you wanted to, not to put you on the spot.
I thought the FY20 budget was my slide, so I thought I'd put it as a thank you.
I had a feeling it was yours. I said, this isn't mine, but I'll take it.
No, just, yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, for all of your, you know, hard work during the last couple of months and grateful that we don't have to continue that work.
Right. Sorry about that, Sarah, but I gave you the last word on it. Moving into new business, I'd like to take 10.1 and 10.2 together. It's a meeting minutes of our May 21st meeting and meeting minutes of June 4th, 2020, as one motion to approve is presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? And we're ready to vote.
Ms. Durgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kozalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
10.3, we already covered under the superintendent's report. That was the motion for the litigation. 10.4.1 is the Wentworth School Social Worker. Sandy, do you want me to read this, or would you like to?
Let me see if I got that right handy. Actually, I don't have that right handy. I'm sorry.
Okay, I can take it if you'd like.
Okay.
For Wentworth School, Alexandra Schroder has been chosen to fill this position created by retirement. Ms. Schroder received her Bachelor of Arts degree in Psychology and Gender and Sexuality Studies from New York University and her Master's of Social Work from Washington University. She was a child, child, youth and family therapist in Missouri, a service coordinator in Oregon, and most recently, a day treatment clinician at Sweetzer and Saco. Ms. Schroder will be placed on step six of the master's scale per the collective bargaining agreement. And the recommendation is to appoint Alexandra Schroder as a Wentworth School Social Worker.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Ms. Durgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kozalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Turner? And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you and welcome to Scarborough. All right, 10.5, we're going to do just one vote, but I'll read both of the motions separately. 10.5 is a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 40560 for the purpose of discussing the educational support professional staff to return to public session and motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 40560 for the purpose of discussing the administrative staff contract to return to public session.
Moved.
Second.
And ready to vote.
Ms. Durgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kozalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
All right. If everyone could join through the secondary link, we will be back to public session in a few minutes. in a few minutes. All right, we're back. Which brings us to 10.7, which is the ratification of the educational support professional staff. Is there a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to ratify the 2021 tentative agreement with the Scarborough Educational Support Staff.
So moved?
Second? And discussion? Hillary?
So I just wanted to say that in this case, the board is ratifying, is voting to ratify this. First, it also will need to be ratified by the educational support professionals. And in this case, I just want to say in, for the public, that this, this process may take a little bit longer. this process may take a little bit longer than normal because we are out of school, um, and, um, and it needs to happen a little bit differently than it would if we were in school. Um, so just for the public, um, to understand that this could be several weeks, um, before the ESPs are available to ratify this. Um, and of course, it's not public until it's ratified and signed by both parties.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we're ready to vote.
Great. Ms. Dergan?
Yes?
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seider?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? Mr. Bennett?
Okay, that passes, which brings us to 10.8, which is another ratification.
Um, so, um, I'd like to move to ratify the 2021-22 tentative agreement that we've reached between the Scarborough Board of Education and the Scarborough Administrators.
Moved?
Second.
And discussion? Nick?
So I just, I was gonna comment on the last one, but I forgot to wait until both of them were over. So I just want to thank, say, um, thank you to these two groups who are the first two, um, that were agreeing forward with this kind of a ratification and to look at these contracts. Everyone wants to have a three-year contract. Nobody likes to reopen a contract once it's settled, but these are unsettling times, and I really want to congratulate these groups as well as the groups that are to come from our districts and stepping forward and, and helping us make the best of a challenging situation. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I'll just clarify again, in this case, um, this has been ratified by the administrators, um, and if it gets ratified in our vote, um, it won't, it still won't be public until a clean copy has been signed by both parties, and once that's happened, it will be, um, a public document and, um, posted to our website.
Thank you. Aleisha?
I just want to say thank you to the two groups as well and echo what Nick said. Um, that's really great leadership and, and, um, I'm very appreciative of it.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote.
Ms. Dergan? Yes? Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seider?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? Mr. Bennett?
And with that, the motion carries. And last, but certainly not least, is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, we can vote.
Dergan? Yes? Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Turner and Mr. Bennett are not here, so, uh, I think we're good.
Fantastic. Thanks, everyone. See you in a couple of weeks at the workshop.
Have a good night.